There is a possibility that he may call in. That's why I have my phone handy. And if Chris Lytle calls in, then he will be able to participate in tonight's meeting pursuant to Resolution Number 060221 that the Council adopted regarding participation remotely at council meetings. Clint, are you here?
Uh-huh.
All right, so we have a forum. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from our meeting of April 6th. Is there a motion regarding those minutes?
I make a motion for thirty minutes. I second.
Is there any discussion regarding the minutes as presented in your backup materials? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our meeting of April 6th, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the minutes are approved. We just move right down under old business. First item under this heading is wastewater, and that is the key billing module. And is that Ivan? Who wants to talk about key billing?
Well, I do realize it was on the, on the, on the agenda. We've, we're still working on getting a few more details. I have learned that there are some costs on the bank side that I wasn't aware of. We are on a, um, um, what do we call that? We have an account or a, uh, an analysis, account analysis, sorry, couldn't think of it. So it isn't actually going to cost us any additional money, but I want to dig a little bit further because I called Wupel today, we called Cumberland today, and I got some different information from them. So we'll get back with you on the next meeting.
No problem.
Awesome, thank you.
And we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the second reading of ordinance number 040622, and that is an ordinance amending ordinance number 010519 regarding the permit fee schedule. And because it's our second reading, we don't have to read the new ordinance in full. It was presented and discussed at the first reading. So is there a motion regarding the second reading of ordinance number 040622?
I make a motion, we pass ordinance 040622.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion regarding the ordinance that will amend our permit fee schedule? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries and ordinance number 040622 is approved on second reading. Next matter for consideration this evening is ordinance number 040622B, and this is an ordinance that increases our sewer connection fee from the current rate of $2,750 to $3,750. And again, this ordinance was presented at our last meeting on first reading, was read in full and discussed at length. Is there a motion regarding this ordinance on the second reading?
I make a motion, we pass ordinance 040622B.
Is there a second?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this item? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 040622B, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 040622B is adopted on second reading. We'll now move under new business. First item under this heading is establishment of our CCD rate. Is that Ivan?
Yep, this comes around every year where if we don't actively bring the CCD rate back up to five cents, then it starts lowering over time. So it's been time of year to raise it and, you know, bring it back up to five percent.
So the motion will be to set the CCD rate at five percent?
Yes.
Is there a motion regarding the CCD rate?
And I believe that needs to be a hearing, a public hearing, so I think you need to open it for...
Okay, yeah, because we are adopting the rate?
Yeah, and unfortunately, the attorneys aren't here at the moment to speak exactly how that's done, but I believe...
You know what, I'll bet you we can monitor.
I bet you you can do it.
We'll certainly try.
But we'll need to give them an ordinance number.
Do you have an ordinance number?
Well, yes, we'll make it 042022.
Sounds like a fine ordinance number. And most importantly, it's consistent with our ordinance number. So, um, at this time, I will temporarily suspend the council meeting, and I will open a public hearing regarding the issue of establishing a CCD rate of five percent. So at this time, if there's anybody that's here this evening that has any questions or would like to talk regarding this matter, please come up to the podium, give us your name and whatever input you'd like to have. Seeing none, I would like to call for a motion to conclude and close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we'll now reconvene the town council meeting, and at this time, we need a first reading of ordinance number 042022, and that means we are not finally adopting this ordinance this evening because it's a two-step process.
It has to be done today, so the first and the second.
Okay, well, and what we'll do... The only way we can do that is if the first reading is unanimous. So we'll take it one step at a time.
And that's for Ted.
Okay, well, missing Ted. Ted in abstention says try to do it tonight, which is perfectly fine. Let's see where we end up. All those in favor of approving ordinance 042022 on first reading, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and because approval was unanimous, we can suspend the rules and adopt ordinance 042022 on second reading if somebody would like to make that motion.
I make a motion, we pass ordinance 042022.
On second reading?
Yeah, pass it, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will second Clint's motion. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 042022 on second reading, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and you can let Ted know that we went through the process. I think we did it properly, and the ordinance is finally approved. The form is approved, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding the apartment complex by Becca Ving.
Good evening. Is that clear, bud? For the record, my name's Otto Crone, I go by Buzz. I work for the town of New Palestine. We've been asked to sort of translate into understandable terms what the COVID management group offer or request is for use of tax increment financing bonds for their proposed development just south of the wellness center within our expanded TIF area. We've got the, sort of a conceptual drawing on the screen above here. I'm going to go through a few slides. I know I, I sent out a white paper kind of talking about tax increment financing in general, and then maybe considerations that might be worthy of consideration in this particular offering. What, what we have here is a very high-end apartment municipal or multi-family apartment unit development that resembles more what you'd see in a subdivision, I think, rather than an apartment complex. They're proposing 282 high-end units. The projected investment from the COVID group is over $60 million, and we're projecting an assessed value of between $30 and $31 million when it's all said and done. Not everything adds to the assessed value, but certainly there's a lot of infrastructure that goes into a project like this that, uh, and what the, uh, the assessed value of the apartment units might be. But, uh, let me see if I can work this. This is a, a snapshot of our TIF allocation areas, the, uh, the green line that goes around pretty much all the downtown area was expanded back in 2019 when, uh, if you see the, um, the yellow area is the, on the south side of the hospital complex. The hospital complex is in the shaded zone. That actually is an allocation area that's designated to pay off a $7.2 million TIF bond that the town agreed to do to provide incentive for the wellness center. And, uh, the, uh, that was about a $35 million investment, I believe, at that time. The, uh, and they're, they're getting, now, you talk about issuing bonds. It's not really front-end issuing bonds and giving the developer money. What it is, it's, uh, the, this type of a TIF bond would be the developer af- after it's constructed and assessed, makes property tax payments into the redevelopment, ends up being captured by the redevelopment commission. And then those are the funds that, a portion of those funds could be used to pay off a TIF bond. In the instance of the hospital project, I think we kept $50,000 off the top for the town redevelopment commission to retain for other purposes. And the other, whatever other property tax revenues, incremental property tax revenues generated by the wellness center go to pay off that $7.2 million TIF bond. And again, it's not, the, the, the town isn't giving cash to the developer. It's sort of the other way around where we give them a piece of paper, and then over the next 18 to 21 years, they would get a portion of their incremental property taxes back to retire that TIF bond, that piece of paper that we, we would give them at closing, similar to what we did with the wellness center for the hospital.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
The percentages that, at least what I've seen in your materials, what's proposed is 75/25. And is that the same allocation that was used for the wellness center? Or was a different allocation used there?
No, that's, uh, much less than what was allowed for the wellness center. The wellness, basically, we get $50,000. The town retains $50,000, and the rest of the incremental taxes go to pay off the, the TIF bond, the $7.2 million bonds for the wellness center. So there wasn't really a ratio like that. Now, what, that 75% that I'm suggesting here might be an appropriate way of looking at this is that that's based on what we think that the assessed value will be. It would take about 70%, 70 to 75% of the, uh, tax increment generated from that project to pay off the five million, the proposed $5 million bond issue over. It's really being paid back over 18 years because there's about three and a half years of what we call, uh, we capitalize interest for three and a half years because we would issue the TIF bond at the time we'd have the closing at the start of the project. And then it's going to be about three and a half years before the $60 million all gets spent, invested into that parcel and hits the tax scroll. So there's a lag there of about three to three and a half years that we've factored in. And I've, I've got a schedule that will kind of show you that. Although those numbers are going to be hard to see because they're, it's a, uh, basically a 21 and a half year amortization schedule with the first three and a half years being covered by what we call capitalized interest. So that, that, that's all factored into the $5 million proposal that's, that's on the table. So, yeah, this would be a little less generous than the scenario that the wellness center received. If that, does that address?
Yeah, but when you say less generous, meaning that...
They're, they're capturing more, like 90 or, you know, 9% or...
The wellness center.
Yeah. And, uh, and to the extent that if, if assessed values on this project were to come in higher, that means that those TIF bonds could be paid off faster. And there'll still be some time at the end where the town will still capture all of the TIF revenue. But for right now, we're, we're, I'm just, this would qualify for the 2% tax cap for, it's, it's commercial, but it's multi-family, so it's at a 2% tax cap instead of a 3% where parts of the hospital were at 3%. Homesteads, comparing it with a traditional housing development, homesteads are only 1%. So the other sort of, I think, significant distinction of this project that's being proposed is that the developer has to come up with all that money upfront where comparing that with a conventional housing development, the developer basically puts in the infrastructure, the site work, and then other builders actually go out and get the money to borrow, you know, to build all the houses. And that may take 10 years, may take 12 years, sometimes longer. This project would be built out within, you know, a couple of years, and then it's assessed, and then the year following the assessment, we start capturing the incremental property taxes. We don't, we don't give cash to, to the developer to build the project, but they would get a portion back from the TIF bond over the, what we're projecting to be a 18-year amortization after it's all built and assessed and starting to hit the tax scrolls.
And just, so I'll make sure that I understand 100%. Once the project's completed and the developer starts paying taxes, those taxes with the 2% cap, whatever the 2% of assessed value and however the tax formula shakes out, whatever that amount is, without the TIF, that amount would go to the county.
Well, interesting, interesting question because right now it's in our TIF area, so theoretically, the redevelopment commission is going to capture it.
Okay.
If it's, if it's built.
Because it's within...
Because it's already in our established, uh, TIF district, yes.
And the request is that 75% of that tax on this project is used to retire the bond?
Correct, and that, that's based on what we think the assessment will come out to. We think it'll assess around 30, 31 million. So that's going to generate about 600, 600 to 620,000 dollars a year at a 2% tax cap. So that's sort of where we are. And then to pay off the $5 million of requested TIF bond, that, uh, and we're projecting that for three and a half years, there won't be increment generated until the project is fully completed and assessed, and then the following year they start paying the full tax bill. That's when the, the redevelopment commission would start to capture that 620,000 dollars a year. It would take, it would take about 300, 380 or 400,000 to, a little over 400,000, I believe, is what we're projecting the debt service to be to pay, to pay it off over the remaining 18-year life of the, of the TIF area.
So the $5 million requested TIF bond, how is the $5 million alive there? Why 5 million, not 1 million or 11 million?
Well, we're sort of backed in. I think originally, they wanted a little more aggressive percentage than, you know, that was maybe more comparable to what the hospital received. I think they've been sensitive to, uh, maybe not asking for everything and providing a little more incentive on the town's end because the town would still capture the other 180 to 200,000 a year for its own redevelopment purposes, wherever they want to do things to comply with the plan for the, the downtown TIF area. So, uh, you know, the 50,000 that the hospital's generating for the redevelopment commission, you know, that was the first bite at the apple. This one, and, and 50,000 is great because that's 50,000 that the town didn't have before the wellness center was built. This would be a little more, uh, appetizing from the town's perspective because we're projecting the TIF there to be closer to, you know, between 180 and 200,000 a year once it's, you know, fully taxable and, and the RDC would capture the 620,000, use about 420 to pay off the TIF bonds, and then, uh, the other 200,000 would stay with the redevelopment commission to do other projects for the town of New Palestine. Let me, let me add one more thing because if you compare that with a conventional residential housing development, there would be no capturing of the increment because you, you don't capture increment on residential housing. Because it's an apartment development, it qualifies as a commercial 2% tax cap that can be captured. So if it were a conventional housing development, the RDC wouldn't really get any benefit of the increment. And it would take much longer to build, build out the, a development. You know, it might take 10 or 15 years where they're putting this 60 million in all upfront will accelerate the assessed value that's going to be captured, that, that could be captured by the, by the redevelopment commission. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, um, you know, I'm kind of comparing two things. One, what the, what the hospital did, and then two, what a conventional housing development might be. And, uh, this is sort of in-between, if you will. So I guess the three primary questions, you know, what are they really asking for? And I think you've zeroed in on that. The, the ask on the table right now is for a $5 million TIF bond. And it wouldn't be cash that the, the town turns over to the developer. It's a piece of paper at closing that over time, they would get a portion, you know, they would presumably get a, a portion of the property taxes that's capped, that would be captured by the RDC to, to pay them back. And, and from what I understand, that's a very important aspect of the developers being able to get their financing for the upfront $60 million to have that TIF revenue stream as part of their portfolio when they go to their lenders to do the project. And again, the, when, uh, you know, conventional residential housing thing, the, the upfront costs are considerably less, you know, you got to put it in the, and usually goes in in sections, so they don't have to do everything all at once. Here, this would be a very accelerated, uh, situation where the 60 million goes in right upfront, and we start capturing, you know, potentially over 600,000. And then whatever split is necessary to, you know, pay off the TIF bond is, is where we would sort of set that. But it doesn't mean that if, if the assessment comes in higher, they just get whatever it takes to pay off the TIF bond and any excess the town would retain. But we, we're projecting, and I don't know how we want to put that in the purchase agreement if, if we get to that point, but I'm just showing what those ratios look like right now if, if we're focused on the $5 million ask and, uh, what we think the, the TIF will be after it's all constructed, so.
And then if the assessed value comes in lower, does that mean it just takes longer to, to pay the bond?
Depends on how you structure the, the deal, but, uh, oftentimes, well, you wouldn't want to structure it where you're paying interest on interest, you know. Oftentimes, they'll have a, a ratio like this that's established, and if that assessment comes in low and that ratio doesn't cover the TIF bond, then they have to either wait till more TIF comes in. If, you know, assessments go up a little bit, you know, the, the bond payment schedule will be set at the time of closing. But the actual assessed value would potentially trend up a little bit every year. So we haven't tried to get into that level of conjecture, you know, with these, uh, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of ifs in any TIF projection, but, uh, it's reasonable to expect that the assessment would come in in that $30 million range, I think. That appears reasonable with the level of investment that's there. And, and we know what the 2% tax cap is. And, and I'll show you, I'll show you some other comparisons as we go through some of these other slides here. Is there any risk to the town? No, the town's not putting any skin in the game. At the worst-case scenario, whatever that percentage comes out, the redevelopment commission's going to capture that. It's going to be more than zero. Right now, we're not capturing anything on that 29 acres. And having something that would go in relatively quick would accelerate when the town could begin to start capturing tax increment from, from this development. And again, since it's a commercial development, we get to capture the TIF. If it were a housing development, we would not. Why TIF and not just tax abatement? Well, tax abatement for real property can only go on 10 years, and the revenue stream from the TIF, uh, bond goes out, you know, potentially, well, 21 and a half years in this scenario. And, uh, the, uh, the revenue stream that that creates for the developer is a big issue, and they're getting their financing to be able to invest $60 million on the front end of, of this development. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, here's a little bit of history for the last five years. Here's a little bit of history for the last five years of assessed value growth that New Palestine has received. The, in 2018, the paid 2018 property tax assessed value was about a hundred and eleven million dollars. For the current year, it's about a hundred and forty-four million dollars. So you've had an average growth rate over the last three years of over seven percent. That's pretty good. You also have a senior center that's in the third year of a TIF, of a tax abatement scenario. That they're... They had a hundred percent abatement for the first two years. And I believe they're at ninety percent this year and for the next couple of years. And then in 2025, there will be another fourteen and a half million dollars of increment that will be added. So you're going to get about a ten percent increase in the paid 2025 tax year just from that one senior center project. So your prospect for property tax stabilization, you know, with or without this project, is pretty good. The, and none of the growth you would get anywhere, you know, from normal development is stifled in any way by providing a TIF incentive for this project. The, and then this project, at the end of its life, you know, at the end of the eighteen-year payoff, that thirty million dollars is about equal to twenty percent of your town's tax rate right now, or your tax base right now. So twenty years sounds like a long time. I probably won't be here in twenty years from now. But in the life of the city, it's not horribly long. And it does go quickly. But anyhow, the... And again, I think that this project does provide an opportunity, a significant opportunity for the town to capture a hundred percent of the increment in that yellow areas that we talked about. And while it's in the TIF area, the RDC gets a hundred percent of those incremental taxes, not just the twenty-five percent share that you would typically get from new development. So it's a significant influx for the town. Obviously, there'd be some, you know, shared benefit in that in that we would use some of that increment to pay back the TIF bond on the front end. But again, the high-end developments such as this need local support. And we're seeing more and more of that in a lot of the counties surrounding and communities surrounding the city of Indianapolis and elsewhere throughout the state, where communities are standing up and giving support for these kinds of projects. In fact, some of them aren't. And we're close to the quality that we're anticipating on this project. Here's a breakdown of your property tax rates and for all the overlapping property tax, property taxing units. The town in New Palestine's rate is forty-eight cents. And then we put the five cents in for the CCV rate, anticipating that that would pass tonight. So you're at about fifty-three cents right now. You're going to be, you're going to get your automatic growth increases every year from the state. And with the average growth rate that you're experiencing, you know, even without these TIF incentives, you should be qualifying for excess levy appeals. And I think we've gotten some of those in the past. We try to do that. And the tax rate still remains relatively stable. Hopefully, it comes down a little bit. But the TIF program is not taking any assessed value away from any of the overlapping units that they have already. It's just all based on the incremental assessed value from the projects generated in the TIF area. This is an illustration that's used a lot explaining how TIF works. The, you have the pre-TIF tax base for the allocation area, which we have a designated area that was established originally in 2018 and then expanded for the Wellness Center project, which took in this twenty-nine acres. That's the subject of tonight's... And then the green triangle there shows an illustration of the increment that could be generated within the, and captured within the life of the TIF area. And then after, at the end of the TIF life, when it sunsets, all of that assessed value goes into the conventional tax base for the town and all the overlapping taxing units. So, and again, it'll be a big hit when that does fall off. But, you know, but for the TIF incentive, you really don't have anything being generated in that area that you can capture, you know. The... Does anybody have any question on that, the life of that TIF area? And like I say, we're about three years into the life of your allocation area right now. So we've got about twenty-one and a half years left. This is a little more close-up configuration of the, I guess I'll refer to it as the hospital complex because they've got, they own all of those parcels. The five parcels that are in the shaded, you know, without the shading, those are the ones that are in the designated area for the hospital TIF bonds. And then the yellow area would be presumably the designated area if we went forward with the TIF bond for the Pocovitch project. Again, their proposal is much different than a traditional apartment complex. And this was just another rendering. I thought I'd put a couple of those photos in there. I think you've seen those before. But the idea here is to attract a very high-end residential development that's actually a commercial tax base. The precedent, just last week, there was an article in IBJ where, and I'm using Carmel as an example because they do this all the time. But it's not just limited to the city of Carmel. But they have four different apartment developments being proposed, three hundred twenty-four million dollars of project costs. And the developers are receiving about almost seventeen percent of that in the form of a TIF incentive, similar to what we're talking about here. For this specific project, the five million dollars would equate to about eight percent of the total project cost. And as you'll see, that, you know, there's three and a half years of capitalized interest factored into that. So between that and the issuance costs is about a million out of that five million. The, and then if it were to go forward, the Pocovitch TIF bond would amortize over eighteen years. And after that, that assessed value hits, the tax grows. And the, but the incremental AV presumably beyond, will go on forever, even after the life of the TIF area sunsets. But, you know, McCordville, Fortville, Fishers, Noblesville, Plainfield, Yorktown, they all have active incentive programs with TIF for multifamily housing projects, some of which are not near the quality that we're anticipating here. This is just a little calculation to compare the proposed Pocovitch project with a traditional build-out for a residential subdivision. You know, assuming you get between two and three lots per acre and build four hundred thousand dollar homes, we would be looking at a one percent homestead. The annual tax increment after it's all built out would be about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Again, it's going to take maybe ten, maybe fifteen years to build out a residential subdivision. Whereas on the Pocovitch project, that's going to all go in upfront. And the revenues to be captured, about six hundred eighteen...
Buzz, I'm going to go ahead and join Chris Lytle. Chris, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will have the record show that council member Chris Lytle is now with us audibly. So, Chris, are you able to hear us okay?
Pardon me?
Are you able to hear us okay?
I'm able to hear. That's okay, but yes.
Okay. Go right ahead, Buzz.
Hi, Chris. And I'd be glad to meet with you after the meeting anytime if you'd like to go through what we're going through. It's basically in substance what we put in the white paper that I distributed last month. And then we have a little PowerPoint illustrations that we're talking about tonight, which you don't have. But you have a copy of them sitting at your empty chair, so. But thanks for joining. Again, the, out of that two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars of potential taxes...
Hey, please ask Chris if you're on his side.
Hey, Chris, are you able to put your, on you? Just that way, we don't get the background noise. Thank you.
Buzz, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, not to cut your presentation short because you've got a lot of useful information here. So I want to know how this is going to affect, like, for the police department, fire department? That's what I want to know. And I would like to also know whether options that we could provide besides just the TIF or this apartment complex?
Well, I think the two big ones would be tax abatement or TIF. I'm not... Those would be one, things you could do that don't really cost you any money. You know, it doesn't cost you any money to give a tax abatement. And theoretically, it doesn't cost you anything to do a TIF when... And I'm going to get into some of the BUT4 test examples because right now, that's probably appraised at agriculture value of, you know, maybe eighteen hundred dollars an acre, something like that, the twenty-nine acres. If it stays as agriculture, it doesn't do anything for anybody in terms of funding. If we capture the TIF, there are probably things you could do with the RDC that could benefit the police department. But those would be decisions that, you know, would need to be coordinated with the council and the RDC. And the councils really, you know, you guys appoint the RDC. And so there may be things that can be done with equipment and things of that nature. You can't pay salaries out of TIF funds. But you can do capital improvements that benefit the TIF area. The, I don't know, that, does that answer...
Well, the apartment complex, they came in here first because they've been trying back and forth for a while. But in the meantime, we've had two other housing developments come in and making the population a lot bigger. And that would require more fire and more police. And then we give a TIF over to the apartments, which would bring in more people. It just seems like it would, we're putting a heavy burden on the people that are supposed to protect.
And everybody's, all the cities around Indiana that are growing have that same issue. So, you know, the indirect things are, you know, continuing to go for excess levy appeals and using public safety as the basis. Now, the town doesn't operate the fire district here, but the township does. And, but there are oftentimes situations where a piece of equipment could be... It sort of has to pass the straight face test with the bond lawyers that it's an eligible expenditure from the TIF. But I would think, you know, police cars and things of that nature that are needed to serve the TIF area. I've seen situations where TIF has been used in that fashion. But you can't use it for paying salaries or normal routine operating expenses.
So when you refer back to the TIFs that, like you just said, is that TIFs that were residential areas? Or were these TIFs that were given to businesses?
Well, you can't... Even though it's a housing development, it's technically a commercial development. So I think the, and as I understand it, the developer will own and operate that complex going forward. Obviously, there's likely to be police runs. There's likely to be ambulance runs, you know, things of that nature. But in the short run, I think you need to rely on the other growth you're getting in your non-TIF area to the best you can. I know the public safety lit is, you know, there's room for that to grow. But that's something out of the town's control. The county would have to, the county tax council would have to prove that. I know the... I don't know that you, you know, in terms of using TIF to subsidize the operating budget of the town may be a stretch. But pieces of equipment that are needed to address public safety in, I mean, most of the downtown is part of that TIF area, it definitely would be in serving and benefiting the TIF area. So I think there are opportunities there that might be more significant than, you know, capturing just twenty-five percent of your share of the property tax rate. It's about twenty-five percent. If it's a housing development, you're only getting twenty-five percent of one percent. With the TIF, you get the hundred percent. But if the deal on the table comes, that twenty-five percent is still going to amount to quite a bit more than what the twenty-five percent would be on the one percent housing development. But exactly how you can spend that money out of a TIF is going to be... There are some hurdles that, you know, you have to meet to be able to justify using TIF.
I just think finally, it seems like an awful lot. It seems like an awful lot.
Well, I'm just about through the slides. So you want me to just finish real quick here? And, but where we're showing the two hundred eighty-eight thousand here, your share of that would be twenty-five percent. And it might be ten years before you'd get to that point. I think the acceleration of the investment and getting that into the tax base is a big plus. And then the BUT4 test, BUT4... And then the BUT-4 test, BUT-4 the TIF program, this development may not have, you know, enough resources to move forward. So, that's probably the biggest issue for the Makovich group. You know, BUT-4 the TIF program, you know, New Palestine would have limited resources to jumpstart this project and other projects in the downtown TIF area. BUT-4 the TIF program, you know, there'd be, the student population, I think, was appealing to the school folks, that they get more revenue per student. There's likely to be, you know, growth in that area as well. And, you know, we're not taking anything away from those overlapping units. And, you know, 18 years seems like a long time, but in the life of the city or the town, it's not, it's not all that long. This project would probably direct about 10 times the property tax revenue towards New Palestine than traditional housing developments would, because you're getting the 2% and you get to capture all of it for 20 years now. Whether it's 5 million or whatever that number is, that's still going to investments in the town. The, over 18 years, that's about $11 million of potential tax increment to capture. The, I know this is going to be real hard to see, but the, if we amortize those bonds, you've got three and a half years of capitalized interest and 18 years of semi-annual principal and interest reductions. It's even hard for me to see it on my screen. But the bond payments would amount to about 8.7 million over that. It's really 21 and a half years, and the increment compared with the increment of over about $11 million. Now, the capitalized interest part of that, we should really take that part off. You're really comparing about the $11 million with the 7.7, 7.8 million of net TIF revenue that would go to retire those bonds, because we've capitalized interest on the first three and a half years. That's amounts to about 700. I apologize, I can't read my own. It's close to $1 million with issuance costs and all that, that would all be paid for out of the developer's pocket. About $1 million of that, 5 million really goes to capitalized interest and issuance costs. The, getting back to the questions that were on the first slide, is the town committing any taxpayer monies towards the BMG project? And the answer is no. You'd be committing a portion of the incremental taxes generated from that development. Is there any risk to the town? No, because if TIF from their project is not sufficient, if TIF bond payments would be limited to whatever TIF sharing that would be agreed upon between the parties in the bond purchase agreement. And again, why TIF and not tax abatement? I think we talked about that a little bit, but it's really an essential part of their being able to get the capital to build the $60 million investment upfront. That's the bottom line from what I've heard from the Makovich folks. And I'm putting a picture of Clint up here at the end here. The idea tonight was to just, you know, put the project and the proposal just in, you know, a more clear perspective than what maybe, seeing some of the numbers. Obviously, that amortization schedule, it's hard to see those numbers. But the TIF, the TIF is a much more essential benefit for the developer to get their funding upfront for the full investment, because, again, comparing that with a traditional housing project that would come in in sections, it doesn't require nearly upfront capital that a project like this requires. So, that's really the bottom line, is what I've gleaned from this exercise. But with that, I probably talked longer than I should, but I'd entertain any questions or, I believe Mr. Makovich is here tonight. If folks want to ask him questions, I think he'd be glad to respond.
I have a question, just in general, not related to this specific project, but in general, in talking about the TIF district. I seem to remember with the Woodland Terrace, you know, TIF district, you know, and all of that, that the school expressed concern on how these districts affect their funding or tax revenue or whatnot, and that whether than, whether it's housing development or whether it's senior living development or wherever the TIF district is, that any sort of TIF district can hurt the school or funding to a certain degree. And over the years, you know, trying to wrap my mind around that, you know, and where you talk to the Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, we'll talk to towns who've done it, and you'll talk to developers, schools, like, everybody has a different opinion or a different take on what does that actually do? And so, that's what I want to clarify, I feel that's a fair thing to do.
Well, a lot of the sting from the school's perspective was removed when they switched paying for the operating costs out of sales tax revenue instead of property tax revenue, because the tax caps pretty much, you know, when you're only getting 1% of a house, even if it's an expensive house, it's not contributing very much to the school. So, the schools have a legitimate concern, but I think if they had a trade-off between getting more student population than nothing, they would, they would welcome the student population. I don't think we're going to be overrun with, you know, if you had, you know, on an average, I think a housing development, you might have a half a student per house or something like that. So, you might add 100 kids to the school system or 150 kids. You know, some of you with three or four kids might be exceptional in that, but when you average it all out, half a student sounds kind of like a ridiculous illustration, but statistically, I think that's pretty accurate. But, and, you know, that's not to say that there can't be some things that could be done for the school through the TIF, the RDC, if they chose to. Obviously, it's got to pass the straight face test with the state border accounts that it's an eligible type thing, but like, you can't pay for operating costs and things of that nature, but you can pay for certain educational things. You can pay maybe, you know, some equipment or something that the school needs, that you could have some sort of ancillary local government flavor for the expenditure. But just passing through the increment doesn't really help any of the units very much. You being able to capture 100% of it, that's a big help for New Palestine.
Well, I seem to remember, you know, after that happened, that the school did, administration did come to, you know, several people individually or, you know, to folks in the community and talked about how then or in the future, the RDC had the capability, there was some sort of caveat where there was a pass-through. If a TIF district was established, there was some sort of caveat that a pass-through could be established where the school could receive a certain percentage or a certain amount or whatever, that would kind of take that sting, you know, out. And like I said, it was several years ago and, you know, trying to.
Well, every year, the redevelopment commission has to have a meeting with all the overlapping taxing units and, and usually the schools are the only folks that show up in those meetings.
Sure, sure.
And you have the ability, you know, every year, you have to notify the county auditor whether or not you want to pass through any of the captured AB. That's something that usually, I think, is due in the middle of June. And so, that ability is always there. Now, you want to make sure you're covering your bond payment obligations, if you will. You know, it's not an obligation if you're capturing the money and you've got more than you need, you know, to make the bond payments or whatever other. It's more than the bond payments, so, I mean, your redevelopment commission could probably fund a number of projects to help the downtown.
Okay.
But, and you get $50,000 a year now that you never had before.
Right.
This project could get you three or four times that amount in a relatively quick turnaround. But there, you know, I would, I would say working with the schools is an important aspect is you want there to be, if you don't have good schools, that doesn't help your community grow either. You want, you want a balance there. But I don't think the state is near as bad as it used to be. The tax caps were the big sting for everybody.
Well, and as a former school board member, I can guarantee, if you were to ask anybody at the school, their bigger concern is the disparity in school funding formula. That our school corporation is one of the lowest per-student-paid school corporations in the entire state of Indiana.
Right.
You know, we get, our school corporation gets probably one-third of the money that the same student gets if they're in an IPS school, or IPS gets for that one student. So, you know, if we really want to help the schools, we should try to get the legislature to fix the school funding formula, because it is ridiculous. And they have a lot of considerations and.
Or kind of income.
And trying to explain why a student IPS gets three times the funding that a student in our school gets.
Right.
And I would argue to the legislature, we get a much better return for our one-third than they will ever get for what they're putting in the IPS. But I don't want, don't get me going, but there are bigger problems for the school.
So, this 5 million dollars that they're asking for, it would be 5 million dollars plus all the entrance that accrue down had over the years?
No, that's part, well, yes, yeah.
So, it'd be 8 million dollars or something like that?
The total principal and interest payments over the life, yeah.
Okay.
But there's about a million dollars of that built into the 5 million already. But, yeah. So, I think the interest rate in the illustration here, these are being, this would be a taxable interest rate, 5 and 1/4% is what is on the illustration. Those are all things that, you know, can be negotiated between the town and the developer. I'm just presenting the ask that's on the table here.
Okay, well, let me ask you another question. You keep talking about 2% for.
Commercial.
Commercial and 1% for residential. Well, wouldn't a more logical thing, using that theory, be 50% instead of 75%?
The, well, I will tell you the difference between the commercial and residential, other than the tax rate, is you can't capture the residential and the RDC.
Yeah.
So, but I see what you're, you know, and again, that's the subject of negotiation between the developer and the town.
So, they're projecting that their bond would be paid off in 18 years?
That's what, what we've, we started a 25-year TIF life when the hospital.
Yeah, we only have 21 years, or 21. Yeah, left on.
So, and then three and, you've got three and a half years that, you know, we won't have any money to make interest payments, so that's.
So, they would collect the TIF until our TIF run out in that district?
They would, they're collecting a portion of it.
Well, that's what I mean.
For the 18 years.
For whatever's left.
It sounds like if they're at 18 years and we have 21 and a half left.
But there's three and a half, there's three and a half years of construction.
Okay. So, yeah, they'll coincide pretty closely.
Right.
It's going to be pretty close, but in the meantime, out of the excess, on this schedule, I don't know if you can, maybe it's easier to read up here. You know, the excess TIF is about 186,000 a year. That's what the RDC, you know, based on this illustration, that's about what the RDC would capture every year. And that could be used for any, anything that the RDC and the town agree on to do projects, other projects, other than the commitment on, you know, whatever that bond amount is. But.
Can I question something?
Nope. Okay.
For me, I need to read all through this.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and Buzz, I just want to make sure, tonight, this is an informational presentation.
I don't think we're.
You're not asking the council to approve this?
I'm just kind of, I'm kind of the messenger here.
Sure.
I'm trying to just run numbers that can communicate the ask with, you know, make it understandable for, you know, what's, what are the considerations, what I would see as the key considerations, but the amounts, that's between the town and the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are department reports. And I understand Yvonne is taking the proxy for a couple of different departments, so I'm just going to turn the floor over to Yvonne.
I'm just running the tab. On behalf of Steve from the street department, he received a community crossings rate that he had by fourth, so that's a success. And that's all I have from Steve.
Is there an amount?
How much did we get?
No, I don't. I'm just telling you what Jim passed on from Steve. Steve's been sick for a couple days. He's got a background for this. And then from Jim, we had an absolutely fabulous Easter egg hunt, which was really fun. And he said for me to thank the council for the Easter egg hunt. I want to thank the bunny and the participants. I want to thank Jim for coming up with this harebrained idea at very short notice and putting it together. And the enthusiasm that man has for the Easter egg hunt was really, really cool. So, we had, we anticipate that we had about 100 kids, maybe more, and lots of good feedback from parents, so I think we'll definitely do it again. And thanks to Needlurch for donating eggs, and, yeah, fun stuff. So, and then the other thing from Jim is he will be attending the IMMA workshop on the twentieth of April, he will be learning all about budget management from the municipal management perspective. There we go. That's all I have.
Nothing from you?
I just want to say that Greg Pence does not want to help us as much as she thought he did.
With the IRS.
With the IRS situation.
I have emailed him twice and I have gotten a response, so, we're still working on the IRS.
And we're still trying to get a response from the state board of accounts as well.
Yes.
And from the IRS themselves.
Yes.
So, we're kind of left hanging.
What do you need from the state board of accounts?
Well, we sent them, yeah, we sent them information saying, hey, your guy at the IRS that you gave the contact information for has never responded back to us, so can you please help us? And critics.
Both, bud, our attorney, please, to the chief of staff over there at state board of accounts, maybe you call him and see if he's got somebody for you?
He'll know somebody.
Yeah, we've, I mean, obviously, we've been at this IRS issue now for many minutes.
September, September.
So, pretty soon we're open, we've all been pulling our hair.
Well, I kind of shuffled, you said you mentioned the last agency, and you would have. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to share to CD?
Yeah, my second offshore board will be heading to Hialeah, the law enforcement academy, for a sixteen-week training course. So, he's just really finished up his road school with us, doing a great job, so, he'll be gone for a while, so he'll be missed, but he won't be missed, but we have him used to hang. As soon as he's back, then probably around September, he'll be done, and we'll get him straight to the road, so. And the other deputies and wells, that's good, so, he's a month, he's a month behind me, so, doing well.
Thank you.
Did you say six weeks?
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, okay, okay. I was doing the math and I thought six months isn't September, six weeks, okay.
Next item on our agenda is public comments, so I'm going to open the floor at this time. Anybody that'd like to make any comments to the council, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and share with us anything you'd like.
Here. A few comments related, Dale Wagner, four four six two south six hundred one. A few comments related to Buzz's discussion of the TIF. I found it interesting that there was no request for the TIF in the original presentations, that they'd come back after the fact asking for our support of the project financially. Also, what happens to the TIF status if the developer sells the property at some point within that TIF? Is it, because that can be leveraged to say, I have this for sale and it has a TIF, why at that point would it not just be paid off, right? So, it's something for you all to consider. Also, the number of jobs created by that development are not a whole lot, I would suspect. It gives all, it's, it's more sales tax with the people there buying stuff, but I don't see a lot of jobs being created in consideration of a TIF, so, few comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Wernemont, thirty-nine eleven, South Street Green Lane. I just, real briefly, I, was this the, the same apartment complex that was brought before the plan commission last summer in the fall?
I think it's the only one yet, so it had to be.
Okay.
We don't have another apartment.
Well, that's, that's what I was hoping.
So, I'm going to say yes.
I was hoping it was another one, so, I would echo the, the questions that, that Angela had about, some of her questions about impact of fire and police and, and road. I would add on to that, the road traffic studies, all these other things, impacting our schools, the fiscal plan type information. So, at least my other question is, I know at the last town council, I mean, two weeks ago, Clint had made a motion about the fiscal plan for Willow Ridge. Is that, you know, was going to be presented tonight or made available tonight? Is that on schedule or?
I have to ask Jim, and he's not here, because they're going to give the fiscal plan to him, and I think he's received. But, check with Jim, because it's not coming.
Can he come into town hall and get the fiscal plan?
I, I haven't received it yet, so I don't know.
Maybe that wasn't the right plan.
I don't know, maybe Jim has it.
Because I know it's not this meeting, it's the next meeting.
Well, the.
Yeah, we, we were supposed to get it by this meeting and we did.
And, and maybe we did, but I don't.
I don't know, she's got it, I, you know, they're, they're convinced.
Okay, but, but you got it, Clint?
I've got it.
Okay, so the board, so the council?
I think, I've seen it, that's why, but it, it's available.
So, if you don't want to give it to Jim, because I, I, yeah, I don't at the moment, can put my, my thing around it.
Right, I know Angela, you.
I think it was Jim who sent it to me, I think, so.
I know Angela, you mentioned you, well, I guess we had to be careful about putting it on the website, didn't we? Right, so we could get a, we could get a copy of it here, or it could be made available. So, other than coming, physically coming in here, is there any way, any other way to get it?
If you email me at Angie@TownyPalestine.org, I will give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Or Jim would as well.
Okay.
Somebody will email you a copy.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thomas Parkley, Commonwealth Engineers. Next council meeting prior to that, six P M., the public notice will be going out. This week, we'll be having a public hearing as we prepare to present recommendations to the comprehensive plan as we do our twenty-year study for New Palestine. It was decided that it's good to update the comprehensive plan at that time, so. It'll be a, an informal meeting where we'll be taking suggestions from the community, what they would like to see in the comprehensive plan, as we make that out to present once we have our full P E R done, and just get that ready, so, that'll be prior to next, or two weeks from now, at six o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's not a planning committee meeting, right?
Nope.
Okay.
So, six P M. May fourth.
And if there is, we'll squeak them in and we'll get everything in.
We tried to make sure that we weren't doing it on the same day as a planning committee, so.
I verified that today, Jim.
Okay.
Well, I would say, I have till ten A M. tomorrow to cancel the public notice in Rachel Porter, so.
And I've got that.
So, if I saw.
When in doubt, send it.
I know, right? It's better to be, better safe than sorry.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill, just for council's information on that, right now it's agriculture, it brings in about six hundred, I'm sorry, seven hundred dollars for taxes, but not all of us, but.
Well, and, you know, I, I thought about mentioning this earlier, but I very, very distinctly remember, because even the school put it on their website, that when there's a TIF, whatever the tax is before the TIF, so if it's agriculture, resident, whatever it's, it's taxed before the TIF, that's a base. And that base gets paid into wherever the base would otherwise go, I'm going to say the county. That base is not affected one bit, so there, in theory, you could say that there's zero detriment because the base stays the same. I would say the, the opposite position is, would the land stay undeveloped for the length of the TIF? Or would a different project come in its place? And, and that's kind of the, the question, nobody knows for sure. What might come later? Would it be better, would it be worse? And again, those are all just considerations, but, because you mentioned the base, that base is paid for the entire duration because the statute requires it, and the rationale there is, there's not a direct detriment to any of the local taxing authorities, specifically schools. So, and even Wes Anderson agreed with that. He didn't want to, but he did, so, I'll just point that out. Anyone else? Okay, council comments, Clint, you have anything that you'd like to add?
No.
I don't either, other than I do hope that the Easter egg hunt that we just had is the first annual, and that we do it each year, because it was a lot of fun.
And you made great money.
Great.
What?
Yes, I was.
No. I know, I don't have any comments other than.
Thanks. Angie? Okay, then we move right on. Last thing on our agenda before we adjourn, this evening, we are requested to consider town meeting, these are claims, town meeting claims twenty-three eight twenty-seven through twenty-three eight seventy-six.
May I interrupt you just a minute?
Sure.
Should we ask Chris if he has comments? Because he may be weird.
His phone, his battery died.
Oh, well, there.
So, we won't ask Chris.
I'm trying to be, you know.
We would have had him done that ten minutes ago.
All right, sorry.
But, thank you for the thought, we won't ignore him, but now I will. So, the next set of claims are wastewater and stormwater claim number twenty-three eight twenty-eight through twenty-three eight seventy-nine, gross payroll claims number twenty-three eight fifty-nine through twenty-three eight sixty-three, and payroll and payroll deduction claims dated April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, number twenty-three eight sixty-four through twenty-three eight sixty-seven, all as presented in your backup materials. First, can we have a motion regarding the claims as presented? Because once we get a motion and a second, then we can discuss. I'm sorry, I need. Okay, I'll second Angie's motion. So, it has been moved in second, now the items up for discussion. Are there any comments, questions, changes, anything regarding any of the claims? Angie?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those claims are approved. The last thing we need.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, no discussion. All those in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, and thank you very much for coming this evening.
Hey, before anybody leaves, they want to have a conversation, they have three channels in the back there.
Wes and Greg, I wanted to open up the floor for public comment, I kind of expected you to give a, hey, vote for me.